Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance before we start.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite in its essence.
Thank you. We'll have a moment of silence. Thank you. I call a meeting to order. Before we start on the agenda, I want to recognize Troop 153 that's here with us tonight. Jeff, I guess you're here for badge or for...
For a merit badge.
Merit badges. We want to welcome y'all. Thank y'all for coming. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Next on agenda is approval of the minutes for February the first, 2016, meeting. Have those in your packet.
I motion we approve the minutes.
Thank you, Ann. Second. Thank you, Ted. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we'll have February 2016 financial report.
I do have a couple of questions. So looking through the larger packet, I don't know what to necessarily call it. Statement of revenue and expenditures. There's a couple of new equipment over 300 and equipment under 300. Are they possibly in the wrong category? So like on, I guess on the second page?
First page, second page.
Second page, sorry. It's kind of hard to identify. I mean, it's...
110, what's category in? Or 102, 106, or you know, the second number?
Uh, 110. So it's a...
10...
Page one.
But down at the bottom, it just says new equipment under $300,000. And then new equipment over 300, the $4,700. Should the 20185 be in the under 300?
That's the, we pay a lease on our copier in City Hall, which is equipment over 300.
Okay, so it's not necessarily the amount paid out, right? I guess is what we're saying?
No, it's not the whole lease agreement. It's the monthly lease agreement.
Just for the month, okay. All right, following you.
Get another one, Trey.
Can you tell me what the Harold and Lanham expenditure is? Just says 825 administration.
What is it?
Harold and Lanham.
Oh, Harold and Lanham, PSC.
Mm-hmm.
That's the CPA from Harrisburg that comes in every quarter to look at the finances.
Okay. I have one more. So with the, and I appreciate you giving us a breakdown for the utilities part. But I guess the question I have on those, some of them have two line items for the same month. So like on the first one for administration, it has two bills. Is that maybe one for City Hall and then one for the community center? Maybe?
Like if you look at Kentucky Utilities for January, there's three different amounts in admin. The 8476, because she went back a couple of months. So I would say that was probably December.
Okay.
And the 8564 was probably January.
January, okay.
And then you got the February one.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I just have one question. It shows the City of LaGrange compensation tax. Is that, I assume, because I'm looking through the other ones on the other months, it's not listed like this. So is this the compensation tax for city employees?
Yes, that would be for every city employee.
Okay.
Which is quarterly. It's a quarterly payment.
Other questions on the bills, financials? Make a motion to accept. Thank you, Ted. Thank you. All in favor? Against? Abstentions, motion carries. Thank you. Takes us down to Mayor's open remarks. I really don't have anything special, and I just thank everyone for being here. Number five, public comment. Anyone wants to come forward?
Good evening.
Evening, Chief.
Last month, I gave everybody our end of the year 2015 report, and I said I'd give you an opportunity to ask any questions you may have tonight. So since I wasn't on the agenda, I thought I'd come down there and public comment. I also had given you all the rundown of the arrests related to and not related to alcohol. And then on the back page, it shows the alcohol tax that we collected this year, past year. And also gave you the 2014, so you can compare both the numbers.
Chief, is that second column, the, on the second page, are those the...
You're talking about the alcohol?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that the annual license fee that they pay?
The second column is the annual fee that is required by the state of Kentucky when they apply for their renewal.
Okay.
And then they're giving that back. They deduct it evenly each quarter. So if they say so X number of dollars, they take whatever the amount for their license was and break it down into four separate parts and deduct...
It's $800, they deduct $200 from...
$200 each quarter.
Okay.
Any other questions? Concerns? If you think of any, email me or call me. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Hey, Mr. Mayor.
Hi there.
Council members.
How you state?
I'm fine, how are you?
Good to see you.
You too. I just wanted to check in. I try to stop by every now and then to your council meetings, remind you that I am Stacy Rockaway. I am Congressman Massey's field rep. We have an office right here in LaGrange. So if you or any of your constituents are having any difficulties with federal issues like Medicare, Social Security disability, veterans' benefits, those are probably the four biggest ones that we work on. But IRS, you know, 501(c)(3)'s, farmers with, probably not a ton of farmers in LaGrange, but farmers with agencies, anything like that, feel free to call us or have them call us. We're happy to open up a, try to open up a congressional inquiry. We can usually do that and see where the issue is. Couple other quick things, that's the biggest thing that we do, is we are a resource for the district. And if we can't solve it, then we'll try to point you in the direction where they can get help. Second thing is calls. If you or any of your constituents are for a bill, against a bill, have ideas on things that need to be fixed, give us a call. Your call is logged into a database every night, and that is passed on to the congressman. So your comments don't stop with a staffer like me, they get directly to your elected official. Grants, I know that federal money is few and far between, and there's a lot of competition. But if you or any organization that you belong to decides you want to apply for a federal grant, and this goes for everybody, of course, give us a call. Congressman is happy to sign a letter of support for that, because we all pay fees and taxes to support those grants, and he's happy to bring some of that money back here. And then last but not least, if you know of any youngsters who are interested in getting into a military academy, they of course have to have either a presidential, senatorial, or congressional, yeah, congressional letter of nomination. And there's actually, there are two tracks that they have to apply for. The quicker that they decide to look at that track and figure out what they need to do, the better, and we're happy to send out the packet of information, you know, freshmen, sophomore. They don't usually work on it until junior, senior, but we're happy to send that out to them early, so they can figure out, you know, what they need to do. And I have business cards in case anybody would like one. Okay? And I'm here, so if you need anything, please give us a call, and I look forward to working with you all.
Thank you, Stacy. Thanks for being here. Anyone else for public comment? Thank you. LaGrange Cross Road District, Karen.
Good evening, how are you all?
Hi, Karen.
Everyone has my report, so I won't go into a great deal of detail. I do want to start off with by thanking the police officers. They've been making their rounds to the shops, so we appreciate that. And also Public Works, they've been outfilling potholes, so that's greatly appreciated also. One thing that you will be getting questions on, I'm sure, is we are getting ready to have some stores shuffling around. And so I just wanted to give you a heads up, so that you can reassure people that they are not closing. The Treasure Child is going to be moving from their shop, their location, to the corner store, the 1887 Corner Store. 1887 Corner Store is going to be sharing space with the LaGrange Antique Mart. And till they can get the house that was Linda Foster's finished renovating, and then 1887 is going to be moving in there, it's going to become a Christmas store again, along with the 1887. So all that being said, that does leave us with an open spot. So if you know of anybody that is interested in renting space instead of buying the house that we have up for sale, then let us know. They have some special incentives going on for any new businesses. We also have a business called the, sorry, have to look here, The Masterpiece Tea. They're going to be opening up on Main Street also. It's going to be a little tea shop. You'll be able to go in and have tea, and she'll have special blends and goodies, and plus she's going to be an art gallery. So that's going to be a nice addition to Main Street. We also got, we're nominated for Independent We Stand, a Main Street contest that they have. We could get $125,000. So I would ask you to go on our Facebook page, and there's a link there to vote for us. You can vote once a day through your email, and continue to vote for that until April 24th. And then you have in your packet an invitation for the tea on April 17th. So if you mark your calendars for that, and try to attend that. The chocolate crawl went over very well. We had good response. We had 164 people, but it was six degrees that day, so that may have had something to do with that, as opposed to last year when it was 60 degrees, so.
Just to clarify, so the current location of the Treasure Child is what is now going to be an empty storefront that will be for lease, not for sale?
Correct, it is lease.
Okay.
The owners may be open for, to, you know, to sell it, but right now it's just for this.
Okay, just want to make sure I have the right location.
Yes. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Karen. LaGrange Utility Report.
Good afternoon, everyone. As you can see, we're still on the Indian State 71 interceptor line. We did refile for another, we refiled for a permit to go out into 71. We did send that off February the 19th. We haven't heard any comments back yet. Were we trying to get into 71, the rehab or interceptor sewer line out there? And Madison Street Pump Station, I talked to engineer Friday, he was up Friday, and we should have that ready to go to the state at the end of this month to go ahead and build the Madison Street Pump Station. On the audit, we discussed the auditor, which I'd already presented to y'all last month, that we had hired a new auditor, and the old one did quit, and we did hire a new one. But we did discuss it in our meeting, and I reported that to them, that same time I reported to y'all, that it is going, it's going pretty good. They finally had a meeting with their old auditor last week. They're coming tomorrow, and that could be their last day that they have to come and gather anything from us. So that's about all I have. Any questions, or...
Ted, I wanted to ask, you all had a big water main break this week.
Of course, yes ma'am.
And how do you notify the households?
Passed out 310 handbills.
Okay.
On doors, taped them to every door that was under effect of that boil water.
Okay.
There was a little misleading, there were that someone sent it to the news media. Jerk-o Road was never under no boil water.
Okay. One question I had, and this might be with Stephanie, is that something we could also utilize, the one call, that we kind of have worked with with the county?
I'm getting ready to research some different ways of actually putting that out, because we actually had to pass out 310 handbills.
Right. And we've got sort of, we've got, I know we pay a fee towards the county for that one call system they have, and we were trying to tweak it so that we could do just specific areas of the city when needed for a situation like that. So I didn't know if we had even discussed trying to use that for the water main break.
Because actually, some of the news media has told us that unless you had 500-plus, they wouldn't even post, they would put it, they would put it on one site. Brian, what'd they tell you? You talked about...
They put it on the social media part, but it won't run on the news, like scrolling across the bottom of the screen. But Facebook, Twitter could be on there.
So if it's less than 500 households, they won't put it up there?
Right. And we did check into that night to try to do it quick, but they didn't want, that's what they told us, you know, that, so we tried two or three different options that night, and after we couldn't do that, everybody got a handbill.
I mean, the word got out pretty quick. I know, I mean, certainly, but I just was curious. I thought that might be something in the future, we could try to look into our one call system.
We're going to start looking to see some quicker way we can get it out to people, you know. We had people live right there next to it that was giving us down the road for being up there working, and she didn't have water. You know, we got blessed because she didn't have water. Well, ma'am, there's 300 some of you that don't have water tonight, and we're doing everything we can do. Well, give us a definite time, it's going to come back up. That's what we face when we come out to fix a water leak, a sewer leak, if they, well, give us a definite time.
Right. No, and I'm just trying to think of ways to make it easier for you guys, because I'm sure the manpower to take all those flyers around house to house is not an easy thing to do.
We can't predict anything, that we see what's happening in that ground, where it's a, you know, where it's a crack. If it's a crack all the way around, usually it's a quick fix. If it's a split that runs longways, we have to dig up more of the road, it's a longer time. That one was enough up there the other night, that we had two pumps running, and we couldn't keep the water away until we got some of the water shut down. And some of the valves didn't want to work right, so that's the reason we had to cut off so many pumps the other night. Other than that, we'd probably have a couple of streets off of it. So that's the reason we had so many out. Okay? Any more questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Next on agenda, I've got the reappraisal of Tom Clemens to the LaGrange Historic Commission for a two-year term.
Motion to appoint Tom Clemens to the Historic District Commission for a two-year term.
Thank you, Trey.
Second.
Thank you, Bill. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Number nine, written determination for disposal of personal property for Public Works.
Thank you, Mayor. Written determination for disposal of personal property, whereas Kentucky revised statute 82.083 states in pertinent part, one, a city may sell or otherwise dispose of any of its real or personal property; two, before selling or otherwise disposing of any real or personal property, the city shall make a written determination setting forth and fully describing, A, the real or personal property; B, its intended use at the time of acquisition; C, the reasons why it is in the public interest to dispose of it; and D, the method of disposition to be used. Therefore, the following written determination is hereby set forth and made, A, the city owns certain personal property, specifically, a 1997 white Chevrolet S10 truck, VIN 1GCDT 19XXVK 148831; B, the city intended to use this truck as a Public Works vehicle at the time of acquisition, and that intended use was fulfilled; C, it is in the public interest to dispose of this property; the cost of continued storage exceeds the value to the city; D, this vehicle will be sold at public auction. This written determination is hereby adopted as true by the legislative body of the City of LaGrange, Kentucky.
Thank you, Steve.
I move we approve the determination for disposal of personal property.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Ted. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Takes us down to number 10, Resolution 1-2016. Stephanie, you want to introduce that for us? Thank you.
I'd like to introduce Resolution 1-2016, encouraging the Commonwealth to undertake study of crosswalks within the City of LaGrange to find safer alternatives.
Thank you. Commonwealth Kentucky, City of LaGrange, Resolution Number 1, 2016, encouraging the Commonwealth to undertake study of crosswalks within the City of LaGrange to find safer alternatives. Whereas the City of LaGrange, Kentucky, is a home-rule city in the Commonwealth of Kentucky, whereas there are roadway intersections and typically-used unmarked pedestrian crossings in the city on state-controlled roadways, namely Highway 146, also known as Jefferson Street, and Highway 53, also known as First Avenue and First Street, that have proven to be hazardous to pedestrians, and serious injury and death have occurred of late as a result. And whereas it is important to the safety and welfare of the city, its residents and visitors, to have safe pedestrian passage within the city limits, therefore be it resolved by the City of LaGrange, Kentucky, that, one, the city council encourages all appropriate departments of the Commonwealth of Kentucky, Governor Matt Bettivan, and our elected state officials, Senator Ernie Harris and Congressman David Osborne, to take all necessary steps to investigate safe alternatives to the present pedestrian passageways within the City of LaGrange on state-controlled roadways, including but not limited to the intersection of Highway 146 and Highway 53, Highway 53 and Main Street, Highway 53 at 502 South First Street, and Highway 146 at 307 West Jefferson Street. Adopted and approved this seventh day of March, 2016.
Thanks, Steve.
I move to approve Resolution Number 1-2016.
Thank you, Bill. Second. Thank you, Ted. All in favor? Against? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Next on agenda, we have introduction, ordinance 3-2016. Shannon, you want to introduce that ordinance for me?
I would like to introduce the ordinance 3-2016, an ordinance adopting the city public works employee policies.
Thank you.
Thank you. City of LaGrange, Kentucky, ordinance number 3, series 2016, an ordinance adopting the city public works employee policies. Whereas the city council of the City of LaGrange, Kentucky, has the authority pursuant to statute to enact ordinances relating to the city. And whereas the City of LaGrange, Kentucky, has codified its ordinances, and whereas the city council deems it necessary to codify the employee policies that will govern the public works employees going forward, be it therefore enacted and ordained by the City of LaGrange, Kentucky, that the City of LaGrange Public Works employees' policies, which are attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference, as if stated in full, are hereby adopted as the policies which will govern the public works employees of the City of LaGrange, Kentucky, henceforth. Any employee policy or procedure previously enacted into law by the city which is not in conflict with the same is hereby ratified. This ordinance shall become effective upon its passage and publication. First reading, March 7th, 2016.
Thank you, Steve. That's the first reading of our ordinance. We'll have the second reading of the meeting April the 4th, and we'll have a public hearing on it then. Number 12 on agenda is introduction, ordinance 4-2016. Ted, you want to introduce that, please, sir?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Introduce ordinance number 4, serial number 2016, modifying 91.70 concerning encroachment permits.
Thank you. Ordinance number 4, series 2016, City of LaGrange, Kentucky, modifying Section 91.70 concerning encroachment permits. Whereas the city council of the City of LaGrange, Kentucky, has the authority pursuant to statute to enact ordinances relating to the city. And whereas it is desirable that specific terms concerning encroachment, permit, fees, and penalties be amended, therefore be it enacted and ordained, that Section 91.70, Parts A, C, and E of the Code of Ordances be modified as follows. Section 91.70 encroachment permit. A, before any encroachment is allowed upon city streets or alleys, a permit must be granted by the public works director. A fee of $100 must be paid at the time of the application. Failure to obtain the encroachment permit may result in appropriate proceedings in the Oldham District Court, including a stop-work order being issued, and/or issuance of a violation citation... and/or issuance of a violation citation, with penalties of $50 with each day of the encroachment is maintained without a permit constituting a separate offense. B remains the same. C, if the property owner disagrees with the decision of the Public Works Director concerning the location of the proposed access, he may appeal that decision to the Code Enforcement Board. D remains the same. E, the City of LaGrange will be charging $100 for an encroachment permit for residential, commercial, and industrial uses. Applicants for residential uses will be required to submit a plat, but it does not have to be certified by an engineer. Applicants for commercial and industrial uses will be required to submit a plat prepared, signed, and certified by an engineer registered to do business in the state of Kentucky. This ordinance shall become effective upon its passage and publication. First reading, March 7, 2016."
Thank you, Steve. That's the first reading. We'll have the second reading and public hearing on this ordinance also, April the 4th. Public comment on that then. Number 13, we've got the second reading, public hearing of Ordinance 1-2016. Steve, thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance Number 1, Series 2016, City of LaGrange, Kentucky, "Modifying Section 117.10 Concerning Sale of Alcohol on Election Days. Whereas the City Council of the City of LaGrange, Kentucky has the authority pursuant to statute to enact ordinances relating to the city, and whereas it is desirable that specific terms about the sale of alcohol on election days be modified to allow the sale of alcohol on election days. Therefore, be it enacted and ordained that Section 117.10, the Code of Ordances, be modified as follows: Section 117.10 Liquor Hours of Sale and Distribution: A, the licensee shall be permitted to sell or dispense distilled spirits, wine, and/or malt beverages by the drink, Monday through Saturday between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and midnight; B, alcohol may be sold and dispensed on Sundays between the hours of noon and 11:00 p.m.; C, the licensee shall provide a separate locked apartment or cupboard, making it visually inaccessible in which all stocks of distilled spirits and wine are kept during these hours when sales are prohibited, see KRS 244.290; D, all delivery of alcoholic beverages in the city shall be made during normal business hours, Monday through Saturday; E, the licensee may sell and dispense distilled spirits and wine on New Year's Eve until 2:00 a.m. on January 1, regardless of the day of the week on which New Year's Eve occurs, provided that the appropriate licenses have been obtained from both the city and the state ABC Board, including but not limited to an extended-hours license. If New Year's Eve falls on a Sunday, alcoholic beverages may be sold and dispensed commencing at noon. If New Year's Day falls on a Sunday, then distilled spirits and wine may be sold and dispensed until 2:00 a.m. on January 1, provided, however, that in either instance, the appropriate licenses for Sunday sales and for extended-hour sales have been obtained from both the city and the state ABC Board. And new section F, "The Distribution and Sales by Wholesale and Delivery of any alcoholic beverage may occur only between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 12:00 midnight, Monday through Saturday. No person shall distribute or sell by wholesale any such beverages at any time on Sunday. This ordinance shall be effective upon its passage and publication. First reading, February 1, 2016. Second reading, March 7, 2016."
Purpose this, this state actually is allowing cities to adopt this for alcohol sales on Election Day. I mean, this goes back to 1800s or something, when, you know, I guess more or less what you could say buy and vote or something. But it's so outdated. The state's allowing it. Jefferson County's doing it, so we brought this ordinance forward. So we can get a motion a second before we go into public hearing.
I make a motion to approve Ordinance 117-110 Concerning Sales of Alcohol on Election Day.
Thank you, Bill.
Second.
Thank you, Ann. I need a motion now to go into public hearing.
Motion for public hearing.
Thank you, Trey.
Second.
Thank you, Bill. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We're now in public hearing. Anybody want to come forward to comment on this ordinance, or? No one coming forward. I need a motion to go out of public hearing?
Motion to go out of public hearing.
Thank you, Trey. Second. Thank you, Ted. All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. We can have a discussion among council. Any discussion? Stephanie, you want to do a roll call, please?
Stephanie? Yes. Shannon?
Yes.
Trey?
Yes. Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Six to zero.
Six to zero. Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we've got the second reading, public hearing of Ordinance 2-2016. If you would, Steve, please.
Thank you. Ordinance Number 2, Series 2016, City of LaGrange, Kentucky, "Modifying Section 156.06K and Section 156.07K..." J, excuse me, "Concerning Appeals of Decisions of the Historic District Commission. Whereas the City Council of the City of LaGrange, Kentucky has the authority pursuant to statute to enact ordinances relating to the city, and whereas it is desirable that specific terms about the process for appealing decisions of the Historic Commission concerning applications for a certificate of appropriateness be modified to require such appeals to proceed before the Code Enforcement Board instead of the full City Council. Therefore, be it enacted and ordained that Section 156.06K and 156.07J of the Code of Ordances be modified as follows." And I'll note for the council that both are now going to have the same reading, so I'll read it once for both sections. "The applicant may appeal a decision on a certificate of appropriateness issued by the Historic District Commission to the Code Enforcement Board, and all the rules and procedures provided in the Code Enforcement Board ordinance shall apply, including the right to an appeal to District Court. This ordinance shall become effective upon its passage and publication. First reading, February 1, 2016. Second reading, March 7, 2016."
We had to change this ordinance before it was appealed to the council. So then we created the Code Enforcement Board, so now it goes to the Code Enforcement Board. So this had to be changed, so. Got a motion?
Yes. I make a motion to approve modifying 156.06K and 156.07J concerning appeals of decisions of the Historic District Commission.
Thank you, Bill.
Second.
Thank you, Ted. Got a motion a second. Need a motion for public hearing? Make a motion, go into public hearing. Thanks, Ted.
Second.
Thanks, Ann. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Anyone want to come forward, public hearing on this ordinance? Motion to go out of public hearing?
Make a motion, go out of public hearing.
Thanks, Ted.
Second.
Thanks, Trey. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Discussion by the council?
Motion to accept. Nobody's going to say motion to accept.
We've already had a... Done that for when it's public hearing. We need to roll call. Stephanie?
Stephanie?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Trey?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Six to zero.
Six to zero. Motion carries. Thank you. Next on agenda, we have old business. Anyone have any old business? New business?
I just wanted to... I think this will be the first time I've brought this up at City Council, but I've been working with Chief Conway on getting the officers of the LaGrange Police Department trading cards, which are similar to baseball-type cards, to help with youth engagement in the community. A lot of smaller police departments around the country have done this, and it allows kids to come up to the officers and ask for their card, and sort of like a collector's set for the city. And I wanted to publicly thank everybody that stepped up to... All the businesses and individuals that have stepped up to sponsor this program, because we're not spending any of the city's money on it. So the following businesses are helping us with this program. Champion Chevrolet, Tice Home Furnishings, LaGrange Service Center, Kroger, Hometown Pizza, Big R's and Shannon's Barbecue, Q&amp;A Sweet Treats, Robin Vessels, Don Williams Law Office, Mad Hudson Attorney at Law, Cornerstone Family Church, and the LaGrange Police Citizens Academy Alumni. So thanks to all those groups. It was $95 an officer, so that each officer can get 500, a set of 500 cards. So hopefully all runs smoothly, and we get them out by late April for everybody.
Thank you, Ann. Appreciate that for bringing that forward to us and your work on it. We appreciate it. Any other new business? Takes us number 16 to Steve.
Are we going to move into executive session?
Yeah.
Pursuant to KRS 61.810B, "Deliberations on Future Acquisition or Sale of Real Property by a Public Agency."
Got a motion, go into executive session. Motion to go into...
Executive session.
Thank you, Ted. Thank you, Bill. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. We shouldn't be long. We...